Everybody, thank you for coming to tonight's meeting. This is the Planning Commission Special Meeting for October 27th. And I'd like to introduce DeCarlo Brown, our moderator for this evening, who will go over some Zoom protocol. DeCarlo?
Good evening. My name is DeCarlo Brown, Planner 3 with Department of Planning and Zoning. I'll be acting as moderator this evening. I'd like to let you know this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio for record-keeping purposes. As this is a virtual meeting, please also keep yourself muted until you are ready to speak to avoid any interruptions. For those of you calling in, you can mute and unmute yourself by using the buttons on your cellphone or by dialing star six. For those of you on a computer, you can mute and unmute your audio or video by moving your mouse, then using the buttons in the toolbar in the bottom left of your screen. You can also mute and unmute yourself by using keyboard shortcuts. On Windows, press Alt+A, and on Mac, press Command+Shift+A. If you would like to speak while someone is speaking, you can use the Raise Hand function. It will notify me, the moderator, that you'd like to speak, and then I can call on you. It is very important that you use the Raise Hand function. If you do not, you will not get a chance to speak. If you're calling in, you can raise and lower your hand by dialing star nine. If you're on a computer, you can raise and lower your hand by going into the participants' panel. You can also raise and lower your hand by using keyboard shortcuts on Windows, Alt-Y, and on Mac, press Option-Y. For those of you, finally, please say your name every time you speak for the benefit of those calling in who cannot see you. Does anyone have any questions about Zoom or Zoom etiquette before we get started? Hearing none, Mr. Conover, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Over to Commissioner Jones for item number one.
Good evening. I'm Steve Jennings, the Chair of the Calvert County Planning Commission. Time is now 7:03. Welcome to the October 27th, 2021 Planning Commission Special Meeting on the Prince Frederick Town-
You're muted, sir.
We're looking forward to a productive meeting. To take roll call, Vice Chair Buehler.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Kernan.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Richard Holler.
Here.
Commissioner John Tuohy.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson Freeland.
Here.
Welcome, Commissioners, and if my end got cut off, we are looking forward to a productive meeting and to listen to the citizens and to garner as much information tonight as we can, so thank you. Now, we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all rise, please.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag-
Flags.
Of the United States of-
The United States of America.
And to the Republic-
Republic.
Which it stands-
Which stands-
One nation-
Nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm sure you all run into the same problem. As you're listening to that, it gets very confusing, but thanks for doing it. I think it's an important part of our meeting, so thank you. Mr. Conover, floor is yours.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 2, Recognitions of Persons Attending This Meeting. From County Planning and Zoning this evening, we have Mary Beth Cook, Director; Carolyn Sunderland, AICP Deputy Director of Planning; Jenny Plummer Welker, AICP Long Range Planner; Tamara Blake Wallace, Principal Planner; and Jessica Gattano, Planner 1. Also in attendance with us, John Mattingly, providing legal counsel; Becky Parkinson, serving as recording clerk; and serving as moderator, DeCarlo Brown, Planner 3. Commissioner Jones, moving on to Item 3, Action on Proposed Agenda.
Do I have any action on up? Do I have any motion for the proposed agenda?
Motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt, I would prefer that we eliminate the word "none" in line 9, Items for Discussion and Action, and then I would be happy to second that motion.
John, repeat that for me, please.
On line 9, it says, "Items for Discussion, Action, None," but then there's an A, Prince Frederick Town Center, counteracting the "None." I would suggest that we eliminate the word "none" and move forward.
Do I have a so moved?
Accept that, and yes, so moved, yeah.
I have a mo- So I have a motion by Commissioner Kernan, a second by Commissioner Tuohy. Vice Chair Buehler.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Conover.
Moving on to the next few items. Item 4, Action on Minutes. There are none to cover this evening. Item 5, Town Center Architectural Actions. There are none this evening. Item 6, Major Subdivision for Final Actions. Again, there are none. Item 7, Applications for Site Plan Review. There are none. And Item 8, Major Subdivision Applications for Preliminary Action. None to discuss this evening, which brings us on to Item 9. Items for Discussion and Action. There is one item. It is Item 9A, Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan. Presenting this evening is Jenny Plummer Welker, AICP Long Range Planner. Jenny?
Good evening. My name is Jenny Plummer Welker, Long Range Planner with Calvert County Planning and Zoning. I'm joined this evening by Tamara Blake Wallace, Principal Planner, and Jessica Gattano, Planner 1, along with Mary Beth Cook, the Director and Deputy Director, Carolyn Sunderland, who have been primarily the team that has been working on the Town Center Master Plan update. This evening, the Planning Commission will be providing an additional opportunity for public input on the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan July 2021 draft. The Planning Commission is giving people who are interested in the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan the opportunity to speak directly to the Planning Commission this evening. This opportunity is in addition to the opportunity that will be provided in the future during a public hearing. And is also in addition to the opportunity that was provided to the public to provide written comments on the July draft. There was the first call for comments, and then the Planning Commission extended that call for comments. The Planning Commission's public hearing, we won't know when that date will be until the Planning Commission's ready to move forward with a draft plan. But when that date is set, the announcement of the public hearing will be made. First, I'd like to express sincere appreciation to everyone who has participated in the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan Update process thus far. For those that have provided input and participation during Phase 1 and Phase 2, who have attended the meetings and the workshops, and those who have participated in the surveys. I also would like to thank the people and agencies who submitted written comments on, who've carefully read and then submitted comments on the draft master plan. The love and passion for Prince Frederick and the hopes and concerns for the town center's future clearly come through those comments. I would like to share my screen to give a brief overview on the update process. So the update process began in January 2020. There was a postcard announcing the first meeting and that the process would be initiated that was mailed to all postal patrons in the Prince Frederick zip code, which was a mailing of over 5,900 postcards. People might be asking, what is the relationship between the Town Center Plan and the County's Comprehensive Plan? The County's Comprehensive Plan is the official policy document for Calvert County, and the Town Center Master Plan is a small area plan. It is not as detailed as the County's Comprehensive Plan. It doesn't cover as many topics, and it doesn't provide the rules and regulations as the zoning ordinance does. The zoning ordinance provides those rules that prescribe land use, and then also the rules to follow when developing land. The Planning Commission endorsed a three-phase process to update the Town Center Master Plans. Prince Frederick is the first one of seven that will be updating. The first phase was identify issues, the second, develop the plan, and third, the adoption process. We are currently near the end of the second phase. We are at the Planning Commission's review. Staff prepared an initial draft, the 2021 draft, with the help of staff from other departments and state agencies, and with the help of our consultants, Sabrin Associates, which is a meat-and-hunt company along with its subcontractors. The draft plan, prepared by the county staff, include these other departments included the Community Resources Department, Economic Development Department, Finance and Budget, Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, Public Works, and the Sheriff's Office, plus the Maryland State Police Barracks, which is just across the street from our office, also provided assistance. The Communications and Media Relations staff is integral during this master plan update. While they didn't provide direct input and writing of the draft plan, without them, we could not have done the public meetings, especially during the COVID phase, when we've gone virtual, and they've been key in doing community outreach and engagement. The Prince Frederick Draft Plan was provided to agencies for comment and then posted to the county's webpage for the public to review and comment. Comments that were received by September 1st were provided to the Planning Commission for your September 15th meeting. At that point, four agencies had commented, plus 13 people submitted comments. Those agencies were the Calvert County Environmental Commission, the Calvert County Department of Economic Development, the Calvert County Heritage Committee, and the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Commemorative Task Force. The public comments included over 80 pages of comments, and these agencies- At the meeting at the 15th, excuse me, at your meeting on September 15th, the Planning Commission considered the request from the League of Women Voters, Calvert County, to extend the comment period. So the Planning Commission voted to extend the comment period through October 1st and to do the presentation on August, sorry, August, today, October 27th. During that timeframe, 11 people submitted comments during the extended comment period. Of those five submitted, of those, excuse me, 11 people submitted comments, of the 13 that originally submitted comments, five of those submitted comments during the extended period. Once the Planning Commission is satisfied with the draft plan, with any revisions that you make, the next phase will be the adoption process, which will include at least two public hearings, one by the Planning Commission and one by the Board of County Commissioners. This concludes my overview process. Now, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Conover.
All right. Thank you, Jenny. We've moved on to the speaker comment period of the meeting. In order to allow for as many speakers as possible, individuals will be allowed to speak one, once per person. And when we call on you, if you'd like to, if you'd like to speak, and you don't already have your name and number, we're going to request that. But we're going to start with a list of individuals who have already signed up and pre-registered to speak, and then we will go on to the individuals that are attending tonight. But before we do that, I would like to introduce the Director of the Planning and Zoning Department, Mary Beth Cook, who will go over speaker protocol information. Mary?
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, and thank you, everyone, for taking time out of your busy schedule to join us for this special meeting of the Planning Commission, a very important meeting on the draft of the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan. As Paul said, I'm Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. This meeting is being streamed live on Calvert County website, Comcast Channel 6 and 1070 HD. Participating staff are subject matter experts charged with carrying out operations of county government on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. Staff do not set policy. We ask that attendees be mindful that staff are here to provide insight into the master plan update and will not engage in political dialogue. Please be courteous while you are providing comments this evening. Speakers will be asked to state their name and address, and whether you are speaking as an individual or representing a group. Speakers who are providing comments as individuals will be allocated two minutes. Comments being made by designated representatives of a group will be allocated five minutes. Speakers will be given a time warning when they have 30 seconds left. Calvert County staff appreciate your attendance and welcome your comments specific, specific to the draft Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan this evening. And now I'll turn the meeting back over to Paul.
Thank you, Mary. All right. This evening, we're going to start off, like I said, with the speakers who have pre-registered, and we're going to start off with J.C. Hooker. J.C., are you on with us this evening?
This is Jenny. If I may, I thought we were going to take the names of the people who would like to, who haven't signed up, who would like to sign up, and then proceed with speakers.
That is correct, but Steve said we're going to take it as they come.
Okay.
So we'll go through this list first, and it doesn't look like there's that many. Mr. Hooker, are you on with us this evening?
Perhaps we can circle back, Ms. Icy Hooker.
I think you need to tell him to press star six.
Miss Hooker, did you hear that? Press star six.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes. Okay. Miss Hooker, it looks like you're representing an organization this evening, so you'll have five minutes to speak, and you can begin when you're ready. Miss Hooker, you may begin. Is she still on? Do you guys see her? Okay. I don't see her anymore. DeCarlo, do you?
I do not see her anymore, so if we could-
So let's move on.
We'll circle back, Mr. Conover. Let's go to the next speaker.
The next speaker will be Tricia Powell. Are you here with us this evening?
And remember to press star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, is this Tricia?
Yes, it is.
Yes, Tricia. We can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, I am here as an individual. I live at 422 Overlook Drive in Leslie. And I'm speaking to you tonight because I am concerned where we are headed. In reading the draft for the Prince Frederick Master Plan, I see the word "development" throughout the report, which I realize that we need some development for our tax base, but we need to grow smart. The plan indicates that traffic congestion has been ranked as one of its foremost concerns by the public. Yet, in the next paragraph, the plan reports that planning and zoning staff follow standards used by transportation agencies in Maryland, and further stated that according to these standards, 2020 levels of congestion are acceptable in most locations and around Prince Frederick. Does this mean that planning and zoning will refrain from conducting traffic studies, especially in areas that are under development because they view our congestion as not a problem? In addition, I'm concerned about expanding the town center. My question is, how did we get to this point where we are even considering expansion? I don't recall the idea of expansion being presented to the public for input. Planning and zoning staff refers to the 2013 Shiret and act as if it is a done deal because it was in the Shiret. How can this be when expansion was never brought to the public for input to follow up to that Shiret? Again-
Three seconds.
I am concerned where our community is headed, and will we be able to grow smart and keep count our county country? Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Our next speaker for this evening is David Burry. Were you with us this evening, David?
Star six. Dave, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, and you may begin whenever you're ready. You have two minutes, sir.
My name's Dave Burry. I live in Breezy Point, speaking for myself. I want to emphasize the huge cost to the county budget and the taxpayer of the greatly increased residential growth permitted by the plan. The draft plan specifically cites extensive new road construction, even as we just learned from the state that no state road construction money will be available for the foreseeable future. The plan explicitly calls for new sewer and wastewater treatment facilities, expanded county health department facilities, a new laundry parking garage, additional bike paths and sidewalks, new developments, expanded parks and rec programs, creation of parks and green spaces. Not mentioned are expansions of policing on us, the Prince Frederick Municipal Freshwater System, and eventually new school construction. None of this is in the County Capital Improvement Plan up through 2027. So how much will this cost? Maryland Department of Planning Best Practices for Town Center Master Plans specifically recommends that a list of new facilities and projected costs be included in the Community Facilities section. I understand PC says that all these cost estimates can come later in other planning documents after the master plan is finalized. But that's too late. The horse would already be out of the barn. The fundamental basis of this plan is huge residential construction. So my request is that the PC's Planning Commission pass a motion tonight to remand the draft plan to planning and zoning, directing them to follow state planning best practices, and actually include financial cost data and a list of new and improved facilities so everyone can assess the impact on the county budget and the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker this evening is Charlene Krimmermeyer. Are you with us this evening, Charlene? Star six to unmute. Charlene Krimmermeyer, are you with us this evening? Moving on to Myra Gawens. Are you with us this evening? Star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Myra, are you? Oh, there you are. Okay, is this Myra?
I'm here. Now, this is Charlene Krimmermeyer.
Oh.
Charlene Krimmermeyer.
Okay, Charlene, you have two minutes, ma'am. You may begin when you're ready.
Charlene Krimmermeyer from Dunkirk, Maryland. What happens in Prince Frederick influences the lives of every person in the county. We have repeatedly said we want to preserve our small-town feel and natural resources. We never, we never requested more residential development. The solution is simple. Stop catering to demands of the building community. Yes, direct growth, but it must be controlled environmentally sound growth. Unlimited growth in Prince Frederick affects our taxes, services, the quality of our schools, fire, medical services, et cetera. Infrastructure, roads, buildings, et cetera. Aquifers, air quality stresses environment and other resources. We pay, builders get rich, and walk away. There must be a growth cap and reduction of unit density to maximum of 5 to 14 units per acre. Without a cap, estimated proposed expansion of Prince Frederick, with estimated 13,000 units, which as well as people are fleeing cities, would mean $26 million cost per year, not counting today's rampant inflation, accounting for services plus supporting, more for supporting infrastructure, none of which is accounted for in the county's projected budget. Scale the expansion, expansion down to meet the Town Center Master Plan's overall long-range generalized goals, which include healthy environment, water quality, wildlife habitat, biological diversity, preservation of water sheds and ecosystems. As much of the expansion land is not good for development due to steep slopes and erodible soil. Make an exception and put into this master plan the requirement that all development and building include an environmental impact assessment and aquifer impact study. Keep tourists and citizens happy. Increase tree canopy to 49%. Increase minimum open space and recreational standards, excuse me, increase minimum, minimum open space and recreational standards for development and throughout Prince Frederick. Encourage low-impact development and design standards to better manage stormwater. Establish an impervious to skull of no greater than 24%, with incentives to reduce impervious surfaces even lower. Do not reduce areas in the environmental conservation area. Designate areas along Hunting Creek. I have hope that you will do what is best for the majority of Prince Frederick and Calvert citizens and decide to conserve and even enhance the quality of our life. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. Next up, Myra Gawens. Myra, are you with us this evening? Myra, is your phone number end with 439? Myra Gawens?
When you turned it on, I started to stutter. I really? Well, I started to-
Myra, is your hand raised? Number 439? Okay, we'll circle back around. Our next speaker will be Leonard Zusa. Leonard, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, and you have, you have two minutes, and may begin when you're ready.
Okay, I'm Leonard Zusa. I'm speaking as a private citizen and live in Solomon's Landing. Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to address you on the proposed expansion of the Prince Frederick Town Center. My comment is simple. You have not been provided enough critical information to make an informed decision on the proposed expansion. First, you've not been provided an environmental assessment that the consultant did not conduct before he recommended substantial development on steep slopes and highly erodible soil. Second, planning and zoning did not provide you the number of residences that would be built in the expanded areas. Although P&amp;Z officials justify this proposed expansion because it was suggested in the 2013 Shiret, they did not follow the Shiret's practice of listing accounts of residences in each expanded area. Knowing the number of new residences is critical for evaluating the impact of the construction on the county because without that, no one can evaluate the number of additional residents in the expanded areas, the number of additional cars that new residents will bring, the impact on traffic congestion resulting from added cars, the increased water consumption by new residents, the added sewage that will need to be processed, and the added costs that will be added to the county budget for services required by new residents. Official documents call for you to evaluate the impact of proposed growth on these critical aspects of county life. In addition, you have an ethical obligation to evaluate these considerations before you approve the Town Center expansion that could have serious harmful impacts on the health and welfare of Calvert residents. Absent of critical information, you need to conduct a responsible evaluation. You should suspend your approval of the proposed expansion until the critical data are available and appropriate analyses are conducted. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Leonard. Our next speaker will be Lila West. Ms. West, are you with us this evening? Star six to unmute. Ms. West? I can see that you've unmuted, but I cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. You have two minutes. You may begin when you're ready.
No, I, I just lost my speech on the computer.
Would you like us to come back?
That we not, no, here I am. I ask that we not increase the size of Prince Frederick Town Center, but instead build on the one-mile residential zone that surrounds the town center. Recent tests have shown that our aquifers are being depleted. Private wells are going dry. Our wastewater treatment plants are overflowing after heavy rains. Our stormwater management systems have failed all around Prince Frederick. Calvert County is a narrow peninsula of sand, covered by a thin layer of soil, held together by trees. Our soil is highly erodible, and we are already subsiding into Chesapeake Bay and the Patuxent River. Hundreds of citizens complained of hour-long traffic jams on Route 24 from Hunting Town through Prince Frederick every AM and PM rush hour, and traffic jams on Route 231. They asked for no new development until traffic studies are done. Calvert County hired consultants that measured traffic by a non-standard method, by averaging in traffic on our many dead-end streets, and concluding there is no problem. I asked for a pause on new building permits until our infrastructure is evaluated with all- all the recent new buildings and the buildings that have already been issued permits. Thank you.
Ms. West? Our next speaker for this evening will be Frank McPhillips. Frank, are you with us? Star six to unmute.
I am.
All right, Mr. Phillips, you have two minutes. You may begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Commissioner, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I also want to compliment the staff on their work to develop a plan. I think my key concern is that, you know, as you described, it's a vision. But it is a policy document, but it's also a vision. And I think it needs something more in there to measure performance and achieving that vision. You know, if zoning is the only mechanism to realize the vision, that's going to leave too much in the hands of developers and their purpose, you know, understandably, their business people is to make a profit, not to realize the vision that we've all described. So I would just ask that the commission instruct the staff to, you know, identify some measures that, you know, could be built into the plan that could then be, you know, evaluated as we proceed and let's check in and see how we're doing along the way. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Frank. Next speaker will be Kevin Eldon. Kevin, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Okay. And Kevin, I see here that you're representing the Edward B. Howland Jr. Living Trust. You have five minutes. You may begin when you're ready.
All right, appreciate it. Yes, my name is Kevin Eldon and I do represent the Edward B. Howland Jr. Living Trust, owner of approximately 115 acres located at the south side of the master plan at South, 1,000 South Solomon Island Road. I had provided a letter September 1st outlining property owners' comments and objections to the proposed master plan. And in that letter, essentially, we raised concerns with the change in the classification or zoning of the property. This property, our property, was identified as environmental conservation area, which was actually the only property within the master plan designated for this classification. It's that that classification is effectively a downzoning of the current property and that's where our concern lies. Not only is it effective downzoning, I think the use is contrary to the overall goals of the town center master plan. So it seems like our concerns were contemplated and addressed by staff in their analysis and their comments came back. I do appreciate that they point out that a portion of the property is designated as not only environmental conservation area, there's a small portion that's traditional suburban and employment center, but for the, for the most part, the majority of the property lies within the environmental conservation area as best we can tell based on the approximate locations on the, on the map. So the staff came back and identified this area and gave the planning commission several options to consider. Number one was to keep the language in the current draft plan and make no change. Again, we feel that's not an acceptable solution because that effectively is a downzoning of the property. They, the second option is to revise the draft plan. They want to presumably, and I'm not sure this is clear and I can follow up with planning separately, to keep a portion of the property in the traditional suburban and an employment center and then reduce the area of the environmental conservation area. Unfortunately, the vast majority of the property is within the environmental conservation area. That's a usable portion of the property. So we don't feel like this is an acceptable solution either. And then the 2B, their other option was to replace the environmental conservation area with traditional suburban land use and instead into the suburban village land use category. Now, the issue there is based on the existing uses, we feel like the traditional suburban is a density issue. I believe it's up to four units per acre and currently we're, we're up to 14. Add in the component with the TDRs, apparently there's some ideas to increase the number of required TDRs. So the traditional suburban classification appears to also be a significant downzoning of the property. The suburban village land use category appears to be similar to the existing category. However, we would need further information from planning as to exactly how that, how that is affected. So we're not sure exactly why this property alone was designated into the environmental conservation area, but we feel like the existing zoning is adequate and that no change should be made. And that's, that's basically our position. So again, we appreciate the planner's work. We appreciate the, the commission taking this up and look forward to finding a workable solution.
Thank you, Kevin. We have one more speaker, then we're going to backtrack up to Ms. Hooker and then Ms. Gawins. First, we'll go to Kyle Green. Are you with us this evening, Kyle?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. And looks like you're representing Friends of Hunting Creek. And you have five minutes. You may begin when you're ready.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kyle Green and I am representing Friends of Hunting Creek. We are a group of concerned citizens who monitor and advocate for the overall health of the Hunting Creek watershed. Hunting Creek watershed encompasses 19,000 acres with 50 miles of creeks and streams. The Prince Frederick master plan will be the single biggest impact to the watershed. This past year, we gathered samples throughout the watershed to assess and establish a baseline of the watershed's water quality. Armed with the results of these tests in conjunction with monthly group meetings, we have looked at the Prince Frederick master plan and have come up with some recommendations in areas of concern. One, development should not be allowed on areas with steep slopes and erodible soils as defined by the USDA Soil Survey Software. Permitted exceptions would be low-impact recreation facilities like bike paths, hiking trails, dog parks, and this should be put in defined terms to ensure compliance. Two, we should set an impervious surface goal of no more than 24% with a long-term goal of reducing this number further in the Prince Frederick Town Center since it is highly susceptible to damaging erosion based on its sedimentary soil and proximity to so many streams. The current imperviousness in the Hunting Creek watershed is 6%. Since most of the proposed town center expansion is in this watershed, further development could push the total beyond the not-to-exceed-value-for-healthy watershed of 10%. Three, development should have requirements for reforestation and green landscaping to reduce erosion, increase water reuptake into groundwater systems, and support the current biodiversity in undeveloped areas that may otherwise be fragmented or lost. A tree canopy goal of 40% is great, but the location of the canopy is equally important. Four, the frequency of heavy rain events over the past 15 years is two events per year of three to five inches or more. Rather than settle for just meeting the minimum standards for stormwater management systems, we should strive for a more robust system, a gold standard. We propose that as a minimum, the gold standard systems would be capable of handling two, three- to six-inch rainfall events per year. We further propose that existing systems be upgraded. Systems built to this higher standard would provide more resiliency to unanticipated rainfall events. This resiliency would pay for itself in the long run because system repair and environmental damage remediation could be avoided. Five, a consistent monitoring and upkeep must be done to ensure highest performance of the systems and protection for our waterways, people, and infrastructure. A thorough list of procedures and schedule for monitoring should be included in the environmental plans. Being understaffed cannot be an excuse for lack of monitoring stormwater management systems. An acknowledgement of current failures and specific solutions should be given to the retrofit and improvement of these structures. A high degree of erosion and sediment release can happen during the construction phase of projects. The same level of prevention used for the gold standard in permanent stormwater management systems should be used for the temporary systems as well. Most importantly, we ask that you establish some parameters or measurements for the environmental section. Measurable and defined goals are a must within that section. Otherwise, there is no standard to uphold and no significant pressure to create a town center that is actually sustainable. Calvert County has a unique geography and thus requires unique solutions to ensure that the natural and cultural resources we all love are protected. Growth is likely to come to Prince Frederick, but it must be done responsibly. We must hold ourselves and others to the paramount idea that growth that cannot be done responsibly should not be done at all. It is a hard step for this county, but it is one we must get right. Thank you for your time and thank you for your work.
Paul, you're muted.
Thank you, Steve. Circling back around to J.C. Hooker, are you with us this evening, ma'am? There we go.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome back. It looks like, it's okay. It looks like you're representing the League of Women Voters, Calvert County, and you have five minutes and you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is J.C. Hooker and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Calvert County. The league is a bipartisan organization dedicated to supporting democracy at the federal, state, and local level. This evening, I am requesting that the planning commissioners hear and address the concerns of the people of Calvert County. The updating of the town center includes 27 years of amendments, zoning ordinance, and comprehension plans. As this requires a lot of work to provide this information to all of us, I want to thank the staff of the planning department for all the work they have done and will still need to do. Commissioners, please reconsider the plan with today's technology, different lifestyles, and making our environment healthy and safe for our next generation. What we may envision our needs are today may be a barrier for our next generation. When you make your decision on the town center plan, consider the mission statement that states the Calvert County government will be responsible and accountable to all citizens of Calvert County. Provide high-quality, effective, and efficient service. Preserve Calvert County environmental heritage and rural character. Foster opportunities for responsible and sustainable residential growth. I appreciate the opportunity for your consideration of the people's concerns for the update to the Prince Frederick Town Center plan. Thank you.
Thank you, J.C. I will go to Myra Gawins, then down to Bob Estes. Myra, are you with us this evening? Another call from Myra Gawins. Star six to unmute.
Paul, do we have any contact information for Myra?
Phone numbers or emails? Yes, we do.
If somebody could, let's, I know this is probably not called for. Somebody call her, please, and let's see if, what the deal is. I don't want to miss an opportunity for her to speak if she wants to.
I'm going to have to move on down to Mr. Estes then, sir. Bob Estes, you still with us?
I'm here for sure. I think part of the problems you're having is there's a significant lag between what's on the computer screen and what's on just individual phones. So that may be a mystery you'll have to solve one of these days. Anyway, let me go ahead. Again, my name's Bob Estes. I live in Prince Frederick and some of you already know me as the guy that who gives stormwater management tours. But tonight, I'm not going to talk about stormwater management so much as been spoken about already. And as a matter of fact, a good share of what I want to talk about has been spoken about, but I'll just add my name to the list. And by the way, I was very pleased to see so many people from Calvert County at the Planning Commission webinar this week. It's good to see you there. We were well represented. And so I'd like to say that in the various meetings, the public has voiced what they like about Prince Frederick, and we know what those are, you know, keep the animal habitats and healthy watersheds, keep Prince Frederick small. But the public also made it quite clear that they don't want high-density residential housing and they don't, they don't want more traffic congestion. As a matter of fact, they'd like that to be reduced. And by the way, traffic congestion is what we feel is traffic congestion, not what some consultant from Montgomery County says he's willing to tolerate. Anyway, the town, draft town center plan seems to promote exactly the opposite of what the public wants while not providing a reason for why we would want the population growth it endorses. Additionally, the county's own calculations show that dwelling units cost the county about $2,000 in services beyond the revenues brought in by property taxes. So the plan just makes it hard for our citizens to believe that they will be benefited, but rather we just get a sneaking and itching feeling that it's large landowners, developers, and the real estate industry that's going to benefit from this. And I think that that needs to be clarified in, in the next iteration. Lastly, I still have an open invitation for anyone who wants to take my stormwater management tour. There's nothing like seeing what I've seen firsthand, and I'm still waiting for my first, my first person from planning and zoning to take me up on my offer. And gentlemen and ladies, thank you so much for this opportunity to voice my concerns.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioner Jones, during that speech, email was sent to Myra as well as a phone call and no contact so far.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there, we have a number of...
Paul, are you able to hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Is this Myra?
This is Myra. You.
Oh, she needs to turn her computer down or off. She's getting feedback, I think.
Yeah, there's an echo.
Paul, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let me, let me just explain that I'm representing Calvert citizens. And let me explain, dear, thousands of taxpaying citizen voters whose voices have not been listened to and their pleadings flagrantly ignored in favor of our county builders and developers, referred to colloquially as the Calvert stakeholders in bimonthly backroom meetings. On August 14th, 2017, Mark Willis declared at a backroom meeting, "There will be no comp plan citizens advisory group per the commissioners and the planning commission." And this was roundly applauded. Yesterday, I spoke with Sarah Suresz at State Planning and the, this is what she said. "The draft plan must be submitted to state for review and sign-off." I want you all to understand this, there was no, absolutely no 29 draft plans submitted to state for review. Mark Willis and the planning commission only submitted the 2017 plan. However, there were serious, extremely costly and outrageous statistical assumptions added during 2019, which leaves Mark Willis, P&amp;Z, the planning commission, economic development, and God almighty, ultimately the commissioners, on the hook for not abiding by Maryland statutes. On August 6th, 2019, the BOCC approved this lopsided backroom sellout. Before passage, this is important, listen, Mark Willis amended the language to, quote, "revisit the comp plan every two years." At court, John Mattingly, who's sitting there... At court, John Mattingly, who's sitting there with you, stated, "It was no big deal, Judge. It had to be revisited every three years anyway." This is an untruth. Yesterday, I got an email that says the plan must be revisited one time at the 10-year mark. Willis, the B O C C, and SPIG demanded that two-year strategy call so the town centers could be extended out and grow larger and larger as and when desired. The following is what our taxpayer voters demand from the planning commission and their supervisor, the B O C C. Dear Lord, first stand up and take charge of this fiasco. Remand and modify the comp plan based on the thousands and thousands of citizen complaints, comments, letters, pleadings before any site plan is presented and the first bulldozer rolls onto the properties. John Mattingly agreed in circuit court that the plan could be remanded. The B O C C has that right. Second, take out these buzzwords that invoke protection of our families, rural character, bay, river, and the watersheds, which have been cleverly adopted in order to deceive and lull hardworking Calvert citizens into compliance. Third, this is a finding of fact, numerous citizens have provided the planning commission with really thoroughly researched empirical data involving the matters of transportation, adverse environmental impact, watershed protections and proposals. Their hard work was pawned off on planning and zoning for summarization. Clearly, most planning and zoning employees do not even possess advanced degrees required for technical summarization. Four, allow Calvert Citizen Genied versus the Board of County Commissioners to work its way through the Court of Appeals before pressing on with these town center master plans. The citizens have ponied up $100,000, over $100,000 for court. Now, Commissioner Hutchins resigned and was replaced by Commissioner Gabway. Commissioner McConkey is a subject of not one, but two ethics violation lawsuits in the Court of Appeals. McConkey's compromised. Mike Hart is the inside point man commissioner for the builder-developers backroom dealing. He's compromised. And the chairman of the planning commission believes the comp plan is the commissioner's comp plan, not the citizens' plan. Mark Willis, who has his footprints and fingerprints all over this thing, you need to have him clean up on aisle seven, eight, and nine. Now, the B O C C are our employees. They have a chance to make things right, or they're going to be voted out of office. Thanks, Paul. I appreciate hearing from you today, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Myra.
Yes.
Saying thank you.
All right. Thanks, Paul.
At this time, if there is anybody that has not spoken who wishes to speak, please have, please use the raise hand function. Kathy Daniel, I see your hand is up. Did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you. I just, I'm kind of, wow, this is Kathy Daniel.
Kathy, before we begin, ma'am, are you representing yourself or an organization?
Myself, and I'll speak for less than two minutes.
Okay. And what is your zip code, ma'am?
208, 20676, sorry.
That's okay. All right. Kathy, the floor is yours for two minutes.
I'm just struck by all of the comments this evening at a, at a public hearing that I attended. It seems like I haven't heard one comment, well, maybe the one person whose property was all put under an easement predominantly. It seems like the, the comments are overwhelmingly for keeping Prince Frederick small and not allowing rampant development. And so I guess I'm confused about how we've gotten to this point. My family are developers, and I, I understand that developers do have, they, they do have an opinion. My family in Montgomery County finds that the county is more supportive of the citizens and the environment than they are of the developers. And I guess I'm just confused. It sounds like in Calvert County, it's the opposite, that the citizens aren't listened to and the developers are. And that makes me sad because one of the reasons that I moved here is because of the beautiful environment that we have. And I must admit, the traffic here compared to Montgomery County, oh, it's, you know, it's not so bad. That's all I had to say. I just wish that you would please listen to your citizens. Their wisdom is extraordinary, and their data that they have presented tonight and in other forms is substantial. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And are there any other individuals with us tonight who have not spoken who would like to speak? Caller with the last three digits, 570, you can star six to unmute. Would you like to speak this evening? Carlo, just to double check, do you see anybody in the waiting room?
I see no one in the waiting room, and no hands are raised.
Commissioner Jones, this concludes the speaker comment portion of the meeting, and I'm going to turn it back over to Jenny Plummer Welker.
Paul, real quick, I just want to say to the, to everyone still on the call, you know, thank you to everyone that called in and took the time to speak your piece and to give us your advice because, you know, I think we've all received emails. I just want to say, everything that you wrote, everything, the responses that you received, we saw all of those. Thank you for taking the time to do it. We appreciate it. Jenny, please.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Planning commissioners, you received the staff memorandum for the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan update, the Planning Commission's special meeting of October 27th, 2021. The memo's dated October 18th in advance of the meeting. There are four attachments I'd just like to note. One is the public comments that were received through October 1st, 2021. Second is the summary and staff's analysis of comments on the plan. Third is the meeting logistics for this evening's meeting, and fourth are the presentation slides. The purpose of this evening's meeting is for the planning commission to consider the written comments received by agencies and the public through October 1st, consider comments of the people who spoke at the planning commission's meeting this evening, and discuss what changes to make to the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan July 2021 draft. At the planning commission's meeting on September 15th, the planning commission directed staff to summarize comments by topic to, so that you, so that you could have a clear understanding of the concerns and return to the planning commission next month, which is now this month. At this point, I'd like to resume sharing my screen for some slides. So we left off at this one. We've gone through the opportunity for people to speak, and now staff's presentation. So here's a purpose spelled out. And then just a reminder, these are the chapters in the draft plan. They mirror the chapters that are in the county's comprehensive plan. At this point, I'm going to stop sharing. I've got some maps available to reference later. At this point, you received in advance the summary. I will note it's a high-level summary, and staff analyzed those comments and then provided the planning commission with recommendations. Comments on that document were identified by a box and italic text, and then staff's analysis were identified by arrows, and then staff recommendation in bold text. So if we could switch over to the summary, staff recommends that the planning commission proceed with reviewing the summary chapter by chapter, and after each comment summary analysis and recommendation, staff recommends the planning commission discuss the item and then give direction to staff of what changes to make, if any. So if by consensus, this is how the planning commission wishes to proceed, then we'll begin on page one of the summary.
I'm sorry, Jenny. I think what we're going to need to do, let's, let's, I think we have several options to continue to review and discuss agency and public comment and the staff's analysis recommendations for a future meeting, and maybe I'm re-summarizing what you already said, Jenny. Or one, return to the PC with revised draft plan, or direct staff to prepare for public hearing and send a revised draft plan. Does that sound about right, Jen?
That's ultimately yes.
So are we ready for a motion, Jenny?
Yes, you can, I'm ready for a motion.
To the planning commission, do I, I will entertain a motion if there's one there.
Mr. Chairman, if I could? I would move that we direct staff to make changes to the draft plan and return to the planning commission with revised draft plan for us to review.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland, do I have a second?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Tu. Vice Chair Bueller.
I'm going to abstain on this.
Commissioner Kernan?
No.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tui?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
What is her tally? You're muted, Paul.
Three to one to two.
Three, one, two. Three eyes, one no, and two abstentions.
The motion carries. Thank you.
This is Jenny, if I may. We staffed with like a little more direction on how to revise the plan.
Exactly.
Commissioner Freeland?
I would, I would see the staff incorporating the proposed changes, including the comments received this evening, like you did with the, with the summary.
Thank you. Staff provided some options in several of the analysis, so I think we're looking for direction on the recommendations that have options.
I agree. I thought that's where you were going earlier. I thought we were going to take a look at these one by one where the options were proposed.
And if that wasn't the intent, that's what I believe we all want to do, is to take these on one by one. So I guess, Commissioner Freeland, I don't want to speak for you, but what I'm hearing from you is that staff take some of the input that we had today, there was a few questions, and to address those questions, that's the first part of it, correct?
Yes, you know, the, the document, the 23-page document that was the summary of staff's analysis, some items on here where the, the staff are proposing multiple options. We need to address those.
Paul, what's your advice here?
Staff is going to need a clear direction on what planning commission would like them to work on. Jenny was looking at going through it a little bit more piecemeal to get a little clearer idea of what the planning commission as a whole was looking at. If that's something maybe we could circle back to, take a little bit of time, would that be acceptable?
Yes. I don't want to speak. If anyone, it feels differently, speak up.
Mr. Chair, in the summary and staff analysis of the comments, July 2021, staff goes chapter by chapter and offers some options or recommendations for change or no change. Perhaps we can take this document and go chapter by chapter, take a look at what staff is recommending, and make decision on the plan chapter by chapter, and then give the staff some direction that way. If that would satisfy you, Jenny. Thank you.
Yes.
Jenny, I'm going to turn the floor over to you, and I'm going to let you lead us into this. So I guess we will start wherever you say.
Thank you. We'll start on page one of the summary. There were no applicable comments to the chapter one purpose. For chapter two on the key issues, I'm not going to read everything in detail, but I'll give a quick summary of the summary, and then staff's brief analysis, and then we can touch on staff's recommendations. So the, the first one was that the, there were comments about the overall county's comprehensive vision of our landscape is dominated by forests and fields, and that the master, the draft master plan includes minimizing disturbance of our natural landscape. There was a request to identify the area west of Prince Frederick Boulevard and south of Hunter's Ridge subdivision as an environmental conservation area, as the draft plan identifies the southern portion of the town center. Staff's recommendation is to add an action to chapter four, the environmental natural resources section, to conduct an environmental study, including soils and tree canopy of the Prince Frederick Town Center and vicinity, and to identify areas for consideration for open space, easement protection, and/or land acquisition. So we're looking for direction on that recommendation of the planning commission wishes to do something different.
Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation on chapter two, key issues and visions.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tui, second by Commissioner Freeland, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tui?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Jenny, thank you.
Thank you. The next segment is, there was a suggestion to add text to the question in the growth and development section, and to revise, the revised text would read, "How can the town center master plan be structured to capture growth that will occur within the county in order to achieve a vibrant town center, but not enable overdevelopment that," and this would be the new text, "degrades the environment and natural resources, and then continues on and strains the quality of life." One of the comprehensive plan's mission, mission is preserve the natural, cultural, and historic assets of the county. So staff's recommendation is to consider adding the text.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Commissioner Holler, my apologies.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Palmer Welker.
Thank you. The next, there was a concern expressed at the Prince Frederick Town Center Thank you. The next there was a concern expressed that the Prince Frederick Town Center needs to have tight restrictions on growth. To not allow the growth rate to climb. The master plan provides broad categories of land uses. The zoning ordinance establishes the density. The planning commission can change the proposed land use categories. Either the location, which is shown on the draft map. Or the proposed residential densities or both. The comprehensive plan includes the action to consider strengthening the adequate public facilities regulations for roads and schools. And to consider additional facilities to regulate. Water wastewater, stormwater drainage, fire and emergency and law enforcement. So this is for planning commission's discussion.
Floor is open. Jenny, do you need a motion on this?
We are looking for direction. If it would help, I can bring up a slide that shows the town center. Phase one, phase two, and the current zoning and because that might be some help during this discussion.
Please.
Just one moment. So I'm sharing a slide. This is Prince Frederick Town Center's. Current zoning, the town center is identified in purple. There is in the dash line, the one mile radius, which allows for. Increased of an allowable increase in density with the use of transferable development rights. The gray areas are employment center zoning. And then the white area is rural residential. And then yellow is residential. Moving on to the next slide, these show, there are two maps show the Prince Frederick Town Center. Closer in with the current county zoning. So again, gray areas is that environmental, yellow is residential, purple is the town center. And in this case, the brown is rural community. And green is farm and forest district. On the right hand side is a map that shows phase one and phase two. Of the Prince Frederick Town Center expansion, these maps, this. Map which shows that the expansion area. Almost all except for a little portion of the gray area on the very west side. Is encompassed in the one mile radius. And then this next slide, just to help people with landmarks. This is the current Prince Frederick Town Center boundary in red. The phase one expansion, which would be the solid purple line. In the north, that would include the medical arts building, it's zoned employment district. There's some cleanup of boundaries, then it's the phase one expansion would include the your. Calvert Town and Symphony Woods area. And then the. Employment area that's just to the west. And the south side of the town center and then the expansion area. Goes out to the Stafford Road intersection on the north side. And not quite so far on the southwest side. So at this point, I'm going to. But one more slide. This slide is of a comparison of the current town center boundary. The proposed expansion areas both phase one and phase two and the hatched purple line. And then the Charette proposed boundary, which is the. The red line. So it included actually reducing the amount of the town center on the south, that the. A portion of the forest district, the current forest district would have been not included. This plan does not propose to take that away. So I will stop showing my slide. And back to the planning commission for consideration.
Okay, so an option would be to, I know we're going to be waiting for some comments and for a few questions to be answered, but. I'll open the floor to the to the planning commission and I will entertain a motion however that is.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question more than a motion. I'm a little concerned. We currently. Have about fifteen hundred acres in town center for Prince Frederick. And this expansion. Would bring us to more like three thousand acres. Which is double the size. Why do we want to double the size of Prince Frederick unless we do want to expand the population? Is there, is there a reason to double the size?
This is Jenny, if I may?
Certainly, please Jenny, thank you.
Certainly, unfortunately, what I don't have a slide of is the nineteen eighty-three comprehensive plan. Section on land use and the town center concept. The town center concept was adopted in nineteen eighty-three. And it also included a town concept. Which was the the town surrounded the town center. The county's implementation of the the town has been through the one mile radius. Which is a designated growth area. So the one mile radius is already considered a growth area. Carolyn can correct me if I'm wrong, but with the residential zoning. One can increase the density up to four units per acre with the use of TDRs, and I see she's shaking her head yes in confirmation. So part of it is a recognition of the one mile radius currently is a growth area. The second part, it's my understanding that when the town centers were first being considered. There was a consideration of of establishing Barstow as a town center. That was not done. Originally, there were six town centers identified and then later on, Lesby was identified as the seventh. There's actually two more, which are North Beach and Chesapeake Beach, but because they have their own planning and zoning authorities municipalities, we don't, the county doesn't control their zoning.
Commissioner Tuie, did that answer your question?
No, not at all. I'm just, I might be a little more confused than I was when I started. I, I. We have the growth area, that is the area that is included in the expansion.
Let me go back to the slide. I'm gonna. So this is a map showing the county's current zoning. The dash line is the one mile radius. Town centers and the one mile radius are considered growth areas. In fact, the one mile radius is designated as a receiving area for TDRs.
Okay.
The next map shows closer up, it shows that. The the area that's proposed to be in, well, the comprehensive plan, the twenty forty plan says. Prince Frederick, to expand Prince Frederick, we, I guess technically have up to twenty forty to actually do it or amend the comprehensive plan at some point in the future. Which needs to be revisited. Periodically. The dash line on the west of. Of the town center along two thirty-one. These areas are in gray are employment, that the original zoning was employment center, town center zoning. So the employment center zone was considered to be. Part of the town center, although it wasn't designated town center. And then the residential areas in yellow are currently allowed to have higher density through the use of TDRs. One thing that the planning commission and the board of county commissioners can do. Is during the zoning regulations update is to. Specify what the maximum density is for these. Expansion areas. It's never, staff has never thought about expanding the density of the fourteen unit acres. Fourteen units per acre all the way out to the new edges of the town center. That it would be sort of like a wedding cake where you've got the highest density in the center. And then as you go away from the town center to step it down. The draft plan does identify a bit higher density around the community college. I think that concludes my comments. If I can, if you have another question, I'd be glad to try to answer it.
No, well, yeah, I do. With the receiving area for the TDRs. As that converts over to town center instead of a designated growth area. Will it still be a receiving area for the TDRs?
Yes, as as designated, as if designated as town center, it would be a receiving area. The question would be at what density, whether it's four units per acre. Fourteen units per acre or some other. They, in the draft plan, there is the various proposed land use categories. They're broad categories, there can be much more definition. So we're sort of into the the next chapter and land use. On pages two and three. Actually, the chart on page four of the of the summary. So there's. Old Town. Main, excuse me, Main Street and Old Town, there's the proposed suburban. Residential, traditional residential and mixed use. So one possibility would be to shrink the areas identified as each. Or to change the amount of density allowed in each. And I apologize, I do not have a map showing that, but it would be on in the draft plan. In the land use section, so it's in chapter three on. Give me a moment. On page three dash five. Is the plan for the. Different types of land use categories. Again, that's page three dash five in the draft plan.
Okay. The current town center that we have, the designated town center. What percentage built out? Do we have an estimate of what that, what that is? Can it continue to grow alone without? An expansion?
That's a great question. I'm not prepared to answer it off the cuff. However, a couple of years ago, Carolyn Sunderland worked with the Maryland Department of Planning Staff on a development capacity analysis. That was provided to the planning commission, I believe in August twenty twenty eighteen, I believe. And we can certainly get that. Planning staff worked with the technology service GIS staff to look at the proposed town center. The phase one, phase two. Expansion areas and to look at the environmental features and. Came up with a back of a potential maximum yield. Through the use of TDRs and then without TDRs. So that's additional information that the staff could provide to you.
Thank you very much.
Jenny, I have a question regarding the calculation of. Of dwellings based on the acreage of a parcel. Is it? Is the calculation based on the total acreage of a parcel or is it based on the acreage of a parcel? After you subtract the steep slope and wetlands?
Leave, and I could double check the methodology, but I believe staff subtracted out the steep slopes area as as not developable.
So so the calculation, just just for instance, a twenty acre parcel. You would, and and say half of it was a steep slope and wetlands. Then you would only be allowed to build the equivalent on ten acres.
At that, for that question, I'm going to defer to Carolyn Sunderland because there's current regulations and then there's could be. Future revisions, revisions. Carolyn?
Commissioner Freeland, we did take out those things that were not permitted to. Be disturbed, like the wetlands and the steep slopes. We also. Netted out approximately twenty-five percent. Which was a figure that we were given by the development community as to what. Needs to go into roads, the. Infrastructure and stormwater management. So twenty-five percent of the site is generally devoted to the provision of those things. So we knocked that also off the top so that we could actually calculate the buildable area.
Carolyn, speaking of the development capacity analysis that was done a few years ago, I guess the question Carolyn is. Does one calculating the amount of dwelling units, does the county use gross acreage or net acreage currently?
For calculating currently, it is gross.
So twenty acre parcel with ten acres of steep slope and wetlands still is calculated as twenty acres?
Correct. They cannot construct on it, but they can basically shift that density over to. And portion of the site that is buildable. So within the site only.
Understand.
I will note that the zoning staff is currently reviewing the county zoning regulations, and I believe that's one thing under consideration is whether to. Use gross acreage or net acreage.
So in in my scenario, the density could potentially be reached for. The full twenty acres if you've got. Ten acres to build on.
Yes, it could, especially if, of course. The development is not all horizontal, for instance, single family development or townhouse. If they go vertical, then yes, apartments, they might be able to get it. But just to reiterate, currently, our density is based on a gross, but that's not realistic to what can actually be built on the site. So when we did the capacity analysis, we came up with a number of factors that were put into the formula. In order to get as close as possible to the number, and we did it on a parcel by parcel basis in Prince Frederick. So that we could accurately estimate the amount of density that could be created on each lot in a total for the town center. And if you would like to see those parameters, I'd be happy to send them forward to you.
Yeah, you know, I I think I would like to see that.
Okay, do I? I I feel like I know what a motion should be, but do we need to take any action at all tonight on this? So we're.
Something like some direction on what you'd like us to do with this section.
Okay, so Mr. Freeland has requested. Information. And I guess the bigger question is that there's any other planning?
Mr. Chair, can I jump in just for a second? And I apologize for cutting you off, but. I I think at this point, because there's been a few motions that have sort of. Told staff which way to go that at this point, if we're going to do something more all encompassing, that we might want to just do a friendly amendment. To all the three previous motions that passed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you need, you need.
So in other words, you don't have to cancel out, you don't have to cancel, by making a friendly amendment, you wouldn't have to cancel out the three previous motions, and this one can be. Just more staff, this is what we want you, we want to amend it by telling staff, this is what we need to have you accomplish and send out to us by the next meeting or. Whatever timeframe you want to set.
Okay. I will entertain that from one of the commissioners.
I've got a question for the attorney. John?
Yes, sir.
The first motion was to bring this back to us.
Yes, sir.
Changes, obviously, we're not going to agree on some of this without, for me, without some further information. Can we continue and just defer this one particular item for 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 later discussion?
Yes, absolutely, you can. It's just I, the discussion was leaning towards making a further request. I just wanted to jump in before we made. Another further request that kind of stepped on the three previous motions, but if you want, if you want to defer certain topics. Yes, absolutely. And you can either table it or you can actually defer it to a date certain.
Commissioner Freeland, is that what you're asking, Commissioner Freeland?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to see how I want to phrase.
Okay, yes, sir.
Which and I, I'm going to move. Which and I I I'm gonna move that on this particular item. And it is. The chapter two. That we're discussing.
This is Jenny. It it also relates to chapter three with the land use and the and the map.
Okay, then I'm I'll move to defer the discussion for chapter two and chapter three until a later date.
When you say deferred, are you saying table it?
Uh I'd like for it to come back for discussion, so table it would be fine.
Thank you, sir. I I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland and second by uh Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland. I believe Commissioner Freeland.
Freeland is frozen.
Yeah, he's frozen. Uh mo- motion carries.
We have enough.
Yeah.
We do. Jenny?
Thank you. With that, I believe we are skipping ahead to chapter four. And we'll leave chapter uh two and three for um a future meeting. Chapter four is the environment and natural resources. It starts on page six. Uh there was a request to add climate change, to add a climate change impact discussion. Um and staff's recommendation is to uh include similar verbiage as shown in um chapter two dash one on resiliency.
Any questions from commissioners?
Uh Jenny?
Yes.
Why not um do a um environmental impact assessment or study?
Typically, environmental impact analysis are done for specific projects like a roadway or bridge project versus a um an overall policy master plan.
So you want to do a chapter with verbiage on resiliency instead?
So um chapter one acknowledges the rapid um changing climate patterns. And it suggests these climate patterns should be taken in consideration when evaluating existing stormwater management measures and infrastructure as well as proposed development. And we suggest including similar language about climate change in chapter um from chapter two point, sorry, two dash one into this section. Staff could also tailor it. I do recall um planning commission had asked for sustainability uh topics to be added to each of the chapters in the comprehensive plan.
Correct. Yeah, I think with with all we we were hearing this evening and all that we've been reading from all the comments. I think we need something a little bit stronger. So yeah, we could do something like that. That would that would better. Please.
Certainly. So staff can expand upon the uh climate impact or add. We'll come back with draft language on climate impact discussion for your review. And I would suggest for this uh that we included in this chapter rather than in all chapters.
Thank you.
We probably need to do that in a form of a motion, I think.
Jenny, that's what you're looking for, correct?
Yes, and unless, I'm not sure that the planning commission can do by consensus. Motion would probably be best.
Be consistent with what we're doing tonight.
Okay, that would be my motion that we include similar language to that which was in the comp plan to include. All all that was just mentioned, please.
Commissioner Kernan, do I have a second?
I would respect the matter.
Commissioner Toohey, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Commissioner Freeland, you're muted, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Motion carries. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. The next item was concerns raised about the lack of an environmental impact study. Um usually, an environmental analysis is conducted during a review of subdivision and site plans. Um prior to development occurring. Habitat protection areas, natural resource protection areas and forest interior dwelling bird species um have specific regulations and protective measures that must be taken into account prior to development. Sites containing much of the environmentally sensitive conditions must uh submit additional plans uh to local, state and or federal agencies to determine if protections are adequate prior to development. So staff does not propose any changes to the draft plan.
Any questions from commissioners? Any comments? Any motions?
Motion to not include an environmental impact study.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Freeland, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Jenny.
The next uh concerns was were raised about developing on environmentally sensitive areas, steep slopes and immaterial soils. We also heard comments this evening on on this topic. Environmental review and impact on environmentally sensitive areas is addressed at the time of subdivision and or site plan review. Um and then again, at the individual lot review prior to permitting for construction. There are federal, state and local regulations required to be met prior to reviewing the uh receiving approval for development. Those requirements are implemented through zoning regulations. There was a comment this evening about um looking at a gold standard versus just the regular regulations. Um I remind the planning commission members that the the plan doesn't um regulate, but it does set policy. So it would be for consideration if you wanted to have that considered. A higher stand, look at a higher standard.
Jerry, the standards that are currently using have changed dramatically over the past few years, I would assume. It appears to me that I did go on that tour with Bob Estes that he discussed earlier. And the um older projects seem to be in much worse shape than some of the newer projects, the uh apartments that went in over behind the seven eleven have beautiful rain gardens in them. I assume that's basically because of regulation change, it's not because of artistic style changes. Is that correct?
Yes, you are correct. Uh the environmental regulations have changed, especially over the last three decades that the Prince Frederick Plan has been in place. Um there is a later on uh discussion about, um I believe, considering uh looking at projects that like predated the current regulations and considering retrofit.
Thank you.
Before we, oh, sorry.
Floor's open. I just wanna, but uh Mister Khan, I already have a statement to make.
No, I was, I just a quick question for you, but I'll wait until after the.
Any other comments from commissioners? Or any motions?
Jenny, what, could you maybe describe a type of direction you're looking for?
So this is a question about um concerns about steep slopes and environmentally sensitive areas. Um staff had had recommended no change. So the planning commission could go along with staff's recommendation or decide to direct staff to add some other language.
Uh Mister Chair, a motion uh will be that since this is um not appropriate to be added to this chapter that no change be made to the plan.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on the motion. Could you uh repeat that, Commissioner Kernan, please?
Yes, since these requests for changes are not appropriate for the, or not applicable for the town center master plan. Uh I recommend that no change be made, and that's my motion.
I will second that. Thank you, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, second by Commissioner Toohey, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Jenny?
Commissioner Jones.
Khan over.
Please.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Jones, you want a uh reminder about the possibility of taking the recess? But also remind that we about twenty minutes would be the possible first scheduled break. But if there is a need to take a recess earlier.
So would Mister Khan I was referring to, if anyone would like a break for any reason for five minutes, I will entertain a motion for that.
At nine o'clock?
Uh I'll entertain motion now if it's needed now, but at nine o'clock, we will, we will have a scheduled break. I just didn't wanna, I wanted to make sure that if anyone needed a few minutes to to.
Bio break.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
It would be a, it would be a motion to recess if it was made.
Hearing on, uh the next break will be scheduled for nine o'clock. Okay.
Thank you. Um we are now on page seven. Uh the comment was to ensure the use of environmental best site design practices and regular inspections to ensure proper installation and compliance of stormwater management installations. New and old, and to require immediate replay repairs or replacements to failing systems. Um the stormwater management regulations are addressed by the Calvert County Department of Public Works and the Maryland Department of Environment. New stormwater management regulations require best management practices and comprehensive design specifications of stormwater management devices. The Calvert County Department of Public Works currently regulates environmental site design through erosion and sediment control. The the erosion and sediment control ordinance and the Calvert County Stormwater Management Ordinance. The two thousand Maryland Stormwater Management Design manuals, volumes one, two, and all subsequent revisions serves as the official guide for stormwater management principles, methods and practices. Um the staff's recommendation is that it's not applicable to the town center master plan to forward comments to the Calvert County Department of Public Works and to encourage cluster development to preserve and protect environmentally sensitive areas.
Thank you, Jenny. Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
I have a question about how might we encourage the cluster development.
Great question, Mister Toohey. I would think perhaps adding of some direction policy statement into the master plan as an action item to encourage cluster development. That way, staff, when um looking at updating the zoning regulations, they can provide some uh options for consideration.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Any motion?
Uh Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we uh ask staff to please provide us with the uh wording necessary to encourage cluster development in order to preserve protected violently sensitive areas um within the master plan, within this plan.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Toohey.
Second.
Second. By Commissioner Freeland, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Jenny?
Thank you. The next item is a a comment that more attention must be given to periodic maintenance of stormwater management installations and immediate repairs or retrofits um to failing systems be done. Uh there's staff's analysis there in the um summary. Um Department of Public Works is responsible for those inspections and maintenance if needed. Staff's recommendation is that this concern falls under site plan review and is not applicable to the town center master plan. Staff recommends no changes.
Thank you.
Motion to um accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland, second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Jenny?
The next is the the ma- master plan um should also designate areas along the headwaters of Hunting Creek.
Take your time, Jen, we're fine.
So the, so the draft master plan shows a proposed conservation area on the southern end of the town center. This comment is that the master plan should also designate areas at the headwaters of Hunting Creek and Battle Creek for preservation. Um and staff's analysis is that in addition to setting the goal of preserving, protecting and conserving natural resources and environmentally sensitive areas, the county comprehensive plan has identified water implementate implementation plans to guide projects to improve the quality of select watersheds. Hunting Creek watershed is one of the watersheds with a plan in place. And chapter three in land use proposes the county develop an environmental preservation strategy for the headwaters of Hunting Creek. All the goals and objectives in chapter four um support the preservation and protection of environmentally sensitive areas. Staff's recommendation is consider designating areas along the headwaters of Battle Creek and Hunting Creek for preservation.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Commissioner, uh uh motion by Commissioner Freeland, second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We're at the bottom of page seven. Um this comment is because forest cover is so important to environmental health. The Prince Frederick Master Plan update and related zoning ordinance um related zoning ordinances should ensure that forest slash tree cover is protected, preserved, maximized throughout the town center. And then the comprehensive plan recognizes the importance of forested land. Um. The county's um land preservation programs have conserved over seventeen thousand four hundred acres of forested land. The goal in chapter four of environmental natural resources is to preserve, protect and conserve land-based natural resources with the first objective being to preserve and restore forest land. The Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan echoes this goal of the comprehensive plan by stating it wishes to preserve forest land and tree canopy and objective one under goal two. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Mister Chair, motion is to uh accept staff's recommendation for no change.
Uh from uh motion from Commissioner Kernan, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Freeland, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We are now on page eight. There was a comment, um actually a request that um one of the action items in chapter four include a numerical tree canopy goal of not less than forty nine percent of the current uh Prince Frederick Town Center with incentives to increase the tree canopy. increase the tree canopy coverage even higher. And there was a recommendation to add an item, an action item, that, to establish a numerical impervious surface goal of no greater than twenty-four percent in the Prince Frederick Town Center, with incentives to reduce impervious surfaces even lower. There were questions raised about the tree canopy and the impervious surface area, and there were comments that the county should consider monitoring the pervious and impervious surface areas, either as a town center as a whole or for certain sensitive areas, to measure a baseline and to monitor the trends to ensure that there are sufficient pervious areas. The technology GIS staff has assisted the planning and zoning staff with the percentages. It is possible that expanded areas, those percentages can be calculated for, and as an example, the Solomon's Master Plan, which was adopted in two thousand nine, established a tree canopy goal of at least forty percent. The Solomon's Plan also referenced the American Forest's recommendation that an urban tree canopy of, of forty percent. Staff's recommendation is to consider establishing a tree canopy goal of forty percent, consider adding an action to periodically monitor the percentage of tree canopy and impervious surfaces.
Question, Jenny? What percentage of impervious surface?
Both that and the tree canopy is noted in chapter four. Give me a moment, and if one of the other staff have it handy, welcome to go ahead. Mr. Chairman, this might be a nice time to take that nine o'clock break, even though we're seven minutes in advance. Staff can look at that and bring it back to the planning commission when we resume.
Do I have a motion for a recess?
So moved.
So moved, I believe that was Commissioner Tui. Do I have a second? Second. I need a yes from somebody.
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
We will resume at nine P M.
Thank you.
Mr. Conover, I have restarted the meeting when you said nine o'clock.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, you may start whenever you would like.
So do we have everyone back? Let me take roll call real quick, just to make sure everyone is back. Vice Chair Bueller.
Here.
Commissioner Kernan.
Here.
Commissioner Holler.
Here.
Commissioner Tui.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Here.
We will now resume the meeting. I will turn it back over to Jenny.
Thank you, Chairman Jones, for the recess. During the recess, staff found the answer to Mr. Tui's question regarding impervious surface. The master plan on page nine dash five discusses that the impervious surface currently, well, not currently, excuse me, what it doesn't indicate is the year that this analysis was done. I believe since the staff had asked the GIS staff for both tree canopy and impervious surface, it was done at the same time as the tree canopy analysis, which was in two thousand seventeen. So assuming two thousand seventeen is the year, there was approximately twenty-four percent of the current boundary of the Prince Frederick Town Center was impervious. The, of that amount, approximately eighteen percent was comprised of asphalt or concrete, and five percent was comprised of buildings. So once again, twenty-four percent of the current town center in two thousand seventeen was considered impervious surfaces.
That answers my question. Thank you, Jenny.
Sorry, Mr. Kernan.
Jenny, a similar question on the tree canopy goal. Do we know where our tree canopy is right now?
No, sir. I know where it was in two thousand seventeen.
Oh, that's fairly close.
And that information is provided in the draft master plan on page four dash six in the environmental chapter. And in two thousand seventeen, there was approximately forty-nine percent of the Prince Frederick Town Center's current boundary, or current area, was covered in tree canopy.
Thank you. Also, the American Forest's recommendation that an urban tree canopy is, should be at forty percent. I'm not sure that I would really want to consider either Prince Frederick or Solomon's urban, although Solomon's does appear to be, be a bit more densely populated and more built out, although a much smaller area. I would like to consider the tree canopy goal being closer to either what it is now or a future number, or a higher number than that forty percent. Know how the rest of the board would feel about that.
Do you, do you have a number, John?
I, I would recommend that we shoot for a goal of fifty percent. And I'd be happy to phrase it as, but matter of fact, I will phrase it as a motion. I would recommend that we follow staff's recommendation of considering establishing a tree canopy goal, however, that we should shoot for fifty percent.
And can we add an amendment to that to include the impervious surface of twenty-four percent?
Certainly, sir.
Thank you. And I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tui, a second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
So.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, commissioners. Jen?
A chapter four states that development can adversely affect water quality, wildlife habitat, biodiversity, et cetera. However, what's lacking is information that could be viewed as an environmental impact assessment. Did the consultant or county staff conduct an environmental impact assessment prior to or during the preparation of the July twenty twenty draft? And if yes, what were the results? If no, will it be completed? An environmental impact analysis is typically conducted for development projects, not for a master plan for a town center, town or municipality. The master plan creates a overall long-range plan with generalized goals. Staff's recommendation is this concern falls under the development and site plan review and is not applicable to the Town Center Master Plan. Therefore, we're recommending no change.
Motion to, motion to accept staff's recommendation, no change.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland.
Second.
By Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
You're up.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Jenny?
There's a comment that, or rather, a request to do an assessment of whether the tree canopy cover will fall below the forty percent standard if the land use proposal is adopted. Staff's analysis is the proposed land use categories are broad categories. Those categories will be translated into zoning districts. There are state and local regulations regarding the preservation of forests and monumental trees. The county government monitors forest cover as part of the state's Forest Conservation Act. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Mr. Chair, motion to follow staff's recommendation of no change.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tui, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is the impact of climate change as it pertains to stormwater management and the need for enhanced efforts to reduce erosion. Hard surface runoff and flood mitigation should be included. Staff's analysis is the Town Center Master Plan does not specifically mention climate change. Staff's recommendation is to consider adding a section on climate change, either in the key issues or natural resources and environment chapters. Or both.
Jenny, for, so the recommendation is to add the verbiage climate change to the chapter?
Well, to add a section on climate change.
Section on climate change, okay. Okay. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we follow staff's recommendation and add a section on climate change in the natural resources and environment section.
Motion by Commissioner Tui.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is, there was a comment to explore giving tax incentives or other incentives to developers who exceed design requirements. Recommend, recommendation was that upfront money and continued funding reserves to cover the life cycle costs of systems such as stormwater management systems, put in place to protect the environment, be identified early and clearly in the process of planning a development. Staff's analysis is that the master planning can include broad policy direction. However, implementation would need to be through the zoning regulations and the creation of an incentive program. Staff's recommendation is to consider adding an action statement to explore incentives for development that exceeds standards.
Questions, commissioners, or comments?
I have a question. Are there, are there other things besides a tax incentive that we might use as incentives for increased use of T D Rs or increased size? Are there, we don't actually have a budget, so I don't know where we're gonna, the, the planning commission is not gonna give anybody a tax cut. We don't have that authority.
Mr. Tui, you do bring up a good point. There may be other ways to provide incentives other than, than, than the tax incentive, so perhaps broadening out the action item. I don't know if you want to be very specific about T D Rs or density or some other thing, but that would at least allow staff during the zoning regulation update to explore those avenues.
Maybe we could just say just incentives and leave it at that, and then maybe.
I would prefer that I was grasping with straws to find ideas. I was not recommending those ideas. Thank you.
Actually, the staff recommendation is consider adding an action statement to explore incentives for developments that exceed standards. So we didn't even specify the, the tax part of it.
In that case, I would make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Tui, a second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next summary comment is the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan draft does not adequately address the problem of highly erodible soils and steep slopes. The Prince Frederick Plan, draft plan includes the goal to preserve, protect, and conserve natural resources and environmentally sensitive areas in the Prince Frederick Town Center. That's goal one on page four dash eight. And the objectives address streams, stream buffers, and greenways. The staff's recommendation is consider adding an action that addresses erodible soils and steep slopes.
Okay. Any comments or questions, commissioners?
I have a question. What might that action be?
Good question. We can come back with a draft.
Okay, thank you so much. In that case, I will recommend, I will make a motion that we recommend that we accept the recommendation of staff.
Motion by Commissioner Tui.
Second.
Commissioner by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next is that figure two in the subwatersheds triple divide figure needs to be reworked with labels that can be read and features that can be seen. The figure three labels are difficult, are, soonly are not legible. Staff agrees figures two and three are difficult to read, and we recommend that staff revise and update figures two and three of chapter four.
So. Motion to accept staff recommendation.
I'm gonna give that motion to Commissioner Freeland. Do I have a second?
I'd be happy to second that.
Commissioner Tui, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next is a large portion of the proposed Town Center expansion includes environmentally sensitive areas. How would this terrain and the microhabitats be protected? How much of the land within the proposed expansion area is considered developable, and how is this determined? The comprehensive plan states its land use goals are to preserve the rural character of the county, its prime farmland, contiguous forests, cultural resources, and environmentally sensitive areas. All the goals and objective, and objectives in chapter four of the draft plan echo this goal. Any development proposed around or on erodible soils and steep slopes, steep slopes is subject to regulations in the Calvert County zoning ordinance and development review by county departments. Staff conducted an analysis in two thousand nineteen of the develop land, developability of the land in the proposed expansion areas. This information could be summarized and included in the plan.
Motion, staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland, a second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners.
The next is the master plan should acknowledge deficiencies of the stormwater management procedures and provide specific new policies to correct current deficiencies. This will not only help protect waters, the watershed, but also inform any developer of the special practices that may need, may need to be needed by developments in the town center. The Calvert County Comprehensive Plan states its land use goals are to preserve the rural character of the county, its prime farmland, contiguous forests, cultural resources, and environmentally sensitive areas. Staff's recommendation is to consider adding an action to conduct a survey of land and potential locations for stream restoration.
Questions, comments, or motions by commissioner?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland.
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next general comment or summary of comment is, in general terms, it is unclear which county organizations have responsibility for implementing the activities which county organizations have responsibility for implementing the activities called for in this plan. Um, staff notes that in each chapter, there are actions and act, well, in the chapters that have actions after each action item, there are abbreviations which identify which departments are responsible and then a key can be found in the front of the draft on page, um, Roman numeral two, identifying those agency abbreviations. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Motion by commissioner?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation, no change.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tuie. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland? Commissioner Freeland? Did we lose Commissioner Freeland?
Think we did. Yeah.
Okay, well, the motion carries. Well, Paul, do we wait a minute or do we continue on and wait for him to kick, kick back home?
You're muted, Paul.
Uh, you should be able to continue on.
Okay. Jen?
If he comes back in in the middle of a motion, though, he won't be able to take action.
Wilson Freeland is back.
I'm back.
All right, Mr. Freeland. Good to have you back.
State the motion, please.
Uh, staff's was suggested no change, uh, regarding the, uh, the comment that it was unclear which county organizations were responsible for the different actions. Um, staff points out that at the end of every action, there is, um, abbreviations and then there's an abbreviation key on page, uh, Roman numeral two. So, no change.
Okay, so was there a motion to that effect?
There was. There was a second and you're the last vote.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Commissioner Freeland.
Thank you. The next comment was air quality is not a particularly significant concern for the master plan. However, air quality should at least be mentioned in chapter four. We suggest adding an objective to encourage the acquisition of electric vehicles and the installation of charging stations in the county to help reduce emissions from fossil fuel vehicles. Um, I will point out that electric vehicles are addressed in chapter seven of the county comprehensive plan. In addition, um, Tamara Blake Wallace is working with Smecko who is looking for, uh, uh, locations to, um, locate EV charging stations. Staff recommends no change.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we accept staff's recommendation of no change.
Second.
Commissioner, uh, motion by Commissioner Tuie, second by Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. I never thought we'd be talking about electric cars. It's crazy, but good stuff.
There's, there's actually a parking spot with an electric vehicle charging station, um, behind the community resource building, the old library. Should anyone need a charge. The next item is in subsection on wetlands on page four dash two. The sentence on line four should read as follows. Wetlands can either be freshwater or brackish. Um, the statement is correct and staff's recommendation is to revise the text as suggested.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland and seconded by, I believe, Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Chairman Jones, could you, uh, please clarify the, um, motion, please, for me? This is Becky.
Commissioner Freeland, could you, uh, clarify the motion?
Motion was to accept the staff's recommendation to revise the text as suggested.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Becky.
Moving on, um, we're at the bottom of page ten. There was a comment to make it explicit and go four point one, point one, point three, that it should include a statement that tree canopy, tree canopy will be monitored periodically and trends noted. Um, the planning and zoning department monitors forest cover as part of the Forest Conservation Act. It is possible to calculate tree canopy by aerial photography. I will note the county does, uh, um, I periodically purchase aerial photography. Um, so we do have the ability when there is new aerial photography obtained to do such calculations. Staff's recommendation is to add an action to periodically monitor tree canopy and note trends.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we accept staff's recommendation to add an action to periodically monitor tree canopy and note trends.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tuie, a second by Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We are moved on to page eleven. We are nearing the end of the comments on chapter four. So there was a request to encourage low-impact development to better manage stormwater. The Environmental Protection Agency has fact sheets, technical reports, handbooks, and grants, um, that are just, excuse me, not grants. I wish they had grants, um, guides available online. They may have grants. I just don't know. Uh, so they're available online. Staff's recommendation is to include a new objective under goal one regarding encouraging low-impact development and add an action item to consider incorporating low-impact design strategies during the development of the town center's zoning regulations.
Commissioner?
Motion to accept. Staff recommendation.
Good motion. Commissioner Freeland makes a motion. Commissioner Kernan seconds. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, um, segment is there was, uh, the comment to encourage the county to monitor and inspect stormwater management during major construction activities with the acknowledgement that this is the Maryland Department of Environment's responsibility. Staff's analysis is this recommendation is broader than the geographic area of Prince Fred, of the Prince Frederick Town Center. The state provides phone numbers by county for people to report stormwater management problems. And then staff has provided that phone number and the email address. Staff's recommendation is no change to the draft plan.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation and make no change in this matter.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tuie?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, last item under the, uh, summarized comments for chapter four. It was recommended that county government or nonprofit organizations should periodically inspect the town center for invasive species on both land and water. Um, staff's recommendation is that this recommendation would be better suited as a countywide effort and suggest it be considered for inclusion in the Calvert County Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, which is currently being updated.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would, um, move that we accept staff's recommendation that this request be a part of the LPP RP for the county.
Commissioner Kernan's motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tuie. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now moving on to chapter five, which is on page eleven. Um, these two, I don't think need any planning commission action. There was no recommendation from staff. It was just recognizing that there were comments that the plan is very comprehensive and in agreement with preserving the natural and historic sites. There were compliments given on heritage, housing, and economic vitality chapters. So, just wanted to note some positive comments.
Thank you for that, Jen.
The substantive one was there was a request to ensure goal three does not affect properties currently in process for development by taking rights away or easements from developable property. So, um, staff's analysis is that preserving and enhancing historic structures and architecture that uniquely characterize Prince Frederick is good for the economy. Many studies have been conducted and results from these studies have proven that historic preservation positively affects the following areas. Jobs, property value, values, heritage tourism, environmental impact, social impact, and downtown revitalization. Supporting and encouraging revitalization and reuse of historic structures does not affect rights of way or easements as they're legal, legally established by deeds and plats. Staff's recommendation, there is none, so no change.
Commissioners, what say you?
We'll accept staff's recommendation. No change.
Commissioner Kernan, that's second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tuie. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Moving on to page twelve, there was a request to consider adding a paragraph titled Route Two Thirty-One Corridor, briefly describing some of the historic structures found in that area, um, west of Maryland two four that may potentially be included in an expanded Prince Frederick Town Center. These structures would potentially include homes, um, as feasible and based on conditions such as the Richard Wilson Mason House, which is an, uh, uh, identified, uh, which is on the Maryland inventory historic sites, the John Stewart House, and others that appear on the Maryland inventory. Um, staff notes that Calvert County is one of the oldest African-American, uh, communities in the nation. By the time the Civil War ended, um, blacks made up sixty-two percent of the county's population and their labor fueled the county's tobacco farms, oyster canneries, and shipbuilding industry. This story should be told. Staff's recommendation is to add a paragraph under the section titled Challenges slash Key Issues titled African-American Community and then briefly describe some of the historic structures found in the area of Maryland two, of west of Maryland two four that may potentially be included in expanded Prince Frederick Town Center area.
Very good. Motion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Tuie, second?
Second.
Commissioner Freeland? Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The final summary comment in this chapter is there was a request to revise the text below goal four on page five dash eleven to state it is the stories of African-American students who attended central school and who endured the deprivations of a segregated school system and of teachers such as Elizabeth and Regina Brown, whose work in demolishing that system had lasting vocal and indeed national impact. Staff notes the goal is incomplete, needs to be revised and expanded. Staff's recommendation is to revise the text below goal four to state it is the stories of African-American students who attended central school and endured the deprivations of a segregated school system and of teachers such as Elizabeth and Regina Brown, whose work in demolishing that system had lasting vocal and indeed national impact.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation with one change, and that is to add, uh, Harriet Elizabeth.
Motion. Motion by Commissioner Freeland, a second by Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, Becky, did you get that motion? I just want to make sure we were moving kind of quick there.
Yes, sir, I did. Uh, it was to accept staff's, staff's recommendation with one change to add Harriet Elizabeth. But I did not get, now, Mr. Will, uh, Mr. Freeland had motioned it, but who seconded it?
Uh, Commissioner Kernan.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to chapter six, housing. We are still on, um, page twelve. There were agency, agencies give me recommendations to change the title Affordable Housing on page six dash one to Diversity of Housing and to revise the goal, goal three, objective one, support programs that increase the availability of, instead of saying affordable units, say a diverse option of units. Um, the comprehensive first goal in the chapter, in the housing chapter is to provide a full range of housing types in town centers to attract and retain multi-generational communities. Staff's recommendation is to revise text as suggested.
Jenny, well, I'm just, I just a question. What is the purpose of changing the text? What is the specific intent?
I think this was, I believe, economic development's, uh, recommendation. Um, the diversity of, of, of units is, you know, not just single family. It would be triplex, duplex, um, well, it could entail those types of units. Affordable tends to look at, there, there's actually definitions of affordable housing. And I think by doing this, it at least broadens it out so that there is, uh, wider, that there's enforcing a wider type of units and not just affordable units.
I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation and revise the text as suggested.
Motion by Commissioner Tuie?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Uh, it's just after nine thirty and one hour, the planning commission by their own policy will consider whether to continue the meeting or to reschedule to a later date.
Thanks, sir. Jen?
Thank you. Um, this is the final, uh, summary for the housing chapter. There were no suggested limits or ratios of subsidized housing to market rate housing units in a given area. Um, the staff notes the draft master plan includes action six point three point one point two. Avoid concentrating subsidized housing. Facilitate affordable housing in all areas of the town center. That's on page six dash four. And, uh, staff would like to note it's very difficult to create subsidized housing without significant subsidies such as the provision of land. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Commissioners?
The chair recommend that we accept staff's recommendation. No change.
Motion from Commissioner Kernan?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tuie. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Moving on to page thirteen, answer a new chapter, chapter seven, transportation. In the shaded, uh, on page seven dash three in the shaded box, um, in the second bullet, the lack of major employers in Calvert County results in slightly more than sixty-five percent. Let me get to, um, seven dash three, just a moment. The full text of that bullet is the lack of major employers in Calvert County results in slightly more than sixty-five percent of commuting trips destined for locations outside of Calvert County, with fewer than ten thousand commuting trips made into Calvert County each day. The request was from the Economic Development Department to make- to revise the statement to state the proximity to federal government agencies and other large employers and other jurisdictions results in slightly more than sixty-five percent of commuting trips destined for locations outside of Calvert County. Staff agrees with the analysis and recommends revising Section Seven Dash Three and Seven Dash Sixteen to reflect the recommended changes.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make recommenda- make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation and revise Section Seven Three and Seven Sixteen to reflect recommended changes.
Motion by Commissioner Tui.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next, there were concerns expressed about the operation of the traffic lights that are not smart. The county is currently working with State Highway Administration and other appropriate agencies to look at ways to incorporate the infrastructure for smart signals or other alternatives. This topic was also addressed in the Calvert County Transportation Plan as a strategy and a goal. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Tui.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next, there were concerns about intersections and traffic studies after widening Maryland Two-Four. The State Highway Administration and county staff will review each development as it comes in to evaluate traffic impact. County staff is also looking at revising the adequate public facilities policy. On all state roads, the need for improvements is handled by the State Highway Administration. A little more background is that with the Department of Public Works, previous work sessions with the county commissioners have noted that developments that have less than four hundred trips per day are not included, and so looking at one of the possible changes is to reduce that threshold. So again, staff's recommendation is no change.
Jen, what is the standard right now for how often we have to do a traffic study, or is there a standard?
So, each time that development is proposed, there is the county road regulations about adequate public facilities for roads. Actually, at this point, if Tamara is on the call, so I'm going to turn it over to Tamara if she can unmute herself and give a little more detail. So, can you repeat that, Chairman?
My question was, how often, is there any standard for the study, and if so, what is it? Is there a-
There is a threshold. If it generates over the four hundred trips that Jenny was speaking of, then a traffic study is required. State, that's for most county roads. State Highway will request those studies when they feel necessary. So, we really don't have any control over when they actually request a traffic study for State Highway.
For me, I just would like to see more comprehensive traffic studies done by us. Just, I'm just making a comment, so I'm not asking.
We will, Jenny, like Jenny said, we will be discussing that when we look at the APF.
Yeah.
To look at those standards at that time and look at lowering that threshold for the traffic studies.
Okay. Tamara, thank you very much. I appreciate you. Okay, Commissioners, with that said, any motion?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland, a second by Commissioner Kernan. I don't want to jump the gun on you, Greg. You did second that, correct?
I did, I did.
Okay. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is concern was expressed about new roads and topography and other environmental impacts that make it difficult for roads to be constructed. Staff's analysis that all new roads will require environmental studies during the planning stage. Placements of these roads will be determined during this process. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that we accept staff's recommendation with no change.
Commissioner Tui.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Moving on to Chapter Eight, Economic Vitality. There were comments that the county needs a more diverse workforce to support local businesses. Goal One of the County Comprehensive Plan Economic Vitality Goals is to strengthen economic opportunity in Calvert County. And Goal Three, strengthen educational and workforce opportunities in Prince Frederick. The first objective is to facilitate development of a workforce that meets the needs of Prince Frederick's variety of employers. There was concern about how those statements read. Staff's recommendation was to revise the first objective to re- to read facilitate development of a diverse workforce that meets the needs of Prince Frederick's variety of employers.
Any comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we accept staff's recommendation and revise the first objective as written.
Motion by Commissioner Tui.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. There was a request to address the scheduled decommissioning of the Calvert Cliffs Nuclear Power Plant. If this happens as scheduled within the next ten years, it will have a serious impact across our county. Staff's analysis is that in the County Comprehensive Plan, the economic vitality goal is, one of the goals is to strengthen economic opportunities in the county. We go on. Basically, the, it's a bit, excuse me, because of this, proactive solutions to any possible changes occurring at Calvert Cliffs Nuclear Plant should be addressed in the county's comprehensive plan and the county's economic development strategic plan, not the Prince Frederick Town Center. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we accept staff's recommendation. No change.
Commissioner Tui, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Freeland. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's hope that they never close.
The next comment, summary comment, is to promote and encourage incentives for small and locally-owned businesses to locate in the area. Goal One of the comprehensive plan is to, in the Economic Vitality Chapter, is to strengthen economic opportunity in Calvert County. And then Objective One, under this goal, is encourage development in Prince Frederick with one of the five points specifying provide incentives for business relocation and expansion in Prince Frederick. That would actually be in the draft plan. Staff's recommendation is due to the fact that this suggestion is currently addressed in the draft, no change is needed.
Commissioners?
Motion to accept staff's recommendations because no change, no change is needed, really.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, a second by Commissioner Tui. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item was about offering financial incentives to small and locally-owned businesses so that they can afford to rent in newly-constructed shopping centers and business districts. Staff's recommendation was to rewrite the following noted and read under Goal One, Objective One in Chapter Eight, Economic Vitality, and that edited text is shown on page fifteen of the summary document. So, that revised language includes maintain an online presence of tools and resources for new and existing county businesses looking to expand and/or locate in the Prince Frederick Town Center and provide incentives for business location, relocation, and/or expansion in Prince Frederick Town Center. So, that staff recommendation is to add that new language or revise the existing language.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, motion to add and revise the existing language to support staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tui. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to page fifteen, the first summarized comment is to revitalize Old Town Prince Frederick, offer incentives for businesses to locate in Old Town Prince Frederick. Staff notes that current and past community outreach efforts have revealed that residents would like to see a vibrant Prince Frederick Main Street, Old Town District, featuring specialty shops, restaurants, and a park. Currently, this area is centered on the civic and government complex, and the majority of activities occur between nine to five during the work week. This goes on, basically, staff's recommendation is to revise the actions under Objective Two. The new text would be to learn more about Main Street, the Main Street America Program, build a stronger community through preservation-based economic development, including the areas of design, promotion, and organization that would replace the current Item B. And then add an Item E, provide incentives for business location, relocation, and/or expansion in Prince Frederick.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland, second by Commissioner Tui. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
There were comments recommending the county develop opportunities for high-quality shopping. Staff's recommendation, excuse me, staff's, there's staff's analysis. And then ultimately, the recommendation is due to the fact that Calvert County cannot control what businesses choose to locate and do business in the county, and both the comprehensive plan and the draft Prince Frederick Town Center Plan address supporting new and existing businesses. No further recommendation or changes are proposed by staff.
Commissioners?
I would make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation with no change.
Commissioner Tui, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Did I get a, did I get a response from Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Sorry, Commissioner. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next was a comment to encourage development in industrial parks. Staff points out that there are no industrial parks located within the Prince Frederick Town Center's current or expanded boundaries. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Like to make motion that we accept staff's recommendation with no change.
Commissioner Tui.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Freeland. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler. Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
There was comments about streamlining the permit process for new businesses. The current draft states streamline the development review process and town centers, maintain a fast-track permitting process for targeted businesses. Staff's recommendation is due to the fact that streamlining the permit process for new businesses is already addressed in the draft plan, that, in the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan Update Draft, no further recommendation is necessary. So, no change.
Motion to adopt staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Freeland, thank you, second.
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 Second, Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. I will be glad when we can raise our hands again, and I'll have to call your names out every single time.
The next summary comment is identify areas of poor broadband and internet access and upgrade services to those areas. The Calvert County Comprehensive Plan states the broadband is as necessary as water and sewer and states as an objective that broadband access is to be provided throughout the county. The availability of broadband and fiber optic networks is extremely important for business development over the next twenty years. Staff's recommendation is to add as a discussion item to improve broadband and high-speed internet services in the Prince Frederick Town Center.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion that we accept staff's recommendation and add as a discussion item to improve broadband and high-speed internet services.
Commissioner, Commissioner Tui, a second by Commissioner Kernan. This is very important. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
I think we learned our lessons when schools went hybrid with the, what we needed and as far as connectivity goes, so. Jen, what was yours?
Next is build upon trail systems to include food and other amenities for visiting hikers and bikers and other users. The Comprehensive Plan identifies the, strengthen the economic opportunity and direct business growth. I'm not going to go through all of this, but one of the items is, let's see, Objective One, under Goal Two, states visitor experiences in Prince Frederick should be improved by doing the following. The suggestion for staff is to change Item F, which currently reads support the establishment of destination accommodations and dining to draw overnight tourism. That would change to support the establishment of destination accommodations and dining to draw and support both day trip and overnight tourism. The longer people stay, the more they spend.
Jenny, the- Jenny, the, the comment about a public art program, can we add that in there as well?
Just a moment.
Please.
That is currently in the draft on page eight-five, consider initiating a public art program.
Thank you very much.
So these, you're seeing in italics are currently in the plan, and staff's recommendation is to change letter F. Yes, change letter F.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Certainly.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make motion that we accept staff's recommendation and change letter F.
Commissioner Toohey, motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. I just want to take a moment. We're gonna evaluate where we're at at ten-thirty. However, is there a motion? Does anyone need a break now? If you do, thank you for, you know, this is, this is a grind right now, but thanks for, for hanging in there. We're, we're getting there, folks. So, does anyone need a break now? Jenny?
Very good. Thank you. The next item was, there were no comments that are, there were comments that there were no specific plans for revitalizing downtown Prince Frederick. In the Prince Frederick Draft Plan in Chapter Five, there's the goal one that addresses revitalization of Old Town Prince Frederick, and it states enhance while preserving a walkable and vibrant business district, government center, and center of community life. Goal one in economic vitality, which is Chapter Eight, goes on into more detail by stating that the economic opportunity and business growth in Prince Frederick can be strengthened by encouraging development in Prince Frederick and revitalizing and strengthening the Main Street, Old Town area of Prince Frederick. And then, under each of those objectives, there are actions identified. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Chairman, I'd like to move that we accept staff's recommendation of no change.
Second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item was the Economic Development Department commented that it does not consider retirement to be an industry sector and recommended its approval, its removal, excuse me. The county's comprehensive plan vision on economy includes retirement as one of the sectors anchoring the local economy. I think the point was that it's not like technically an industry sector. Staff's recommendation is to change, as the Economic Development Department suggested.
Motion to accept the change suggested.
Second.
Commissioner Kernan is the motion. Commissioner Toohey is the second. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on, we are now moving into Chapter Nine, Water Resources, on page eighteen of the summary and analysis. There were comments submitted around concerns on water demand, quality, and contamination, and wastewater treatment. Staff's analysis is these concerns are better addressed in a functional plan rather than a small-area plan. The Calvert County Comprehensive Water and Sewage Plan is the appropriate plan in which to address these concerns. Staff's recommendation is no change. Comments have been shared with the Department of Public Works, and staff will share the comments with the Calvert County Health Department, the Division of Environmental Health.
Commissioners?
Motion to accept staff recommendation, no change.
Commissioner Freeland.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes Chapter Nine. Moving on to Chapter Ten. The question was, have you thought more about schools' fire and rescue services? Basically, the county staff is working on the draft Calvert County zoning ordinance, and staff is looking at schools' fire and rescue through the adequate public facilities. The county comprehensive plan directs to consider strengthening the APF regulations for schools and for adding the fire and rescue services. So staff's recommendation is no change.
Chairman, I'd like to move that we accept staff's recommendation of no change.
Motion by Commissioner Toohey.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next is can agree or square with benches where people can mingle, be at it between the new county administration building and the courthouse. The conceptual site plan for the new county administration building includes a plaza extending from Main Street to the front of the building. The plaza consists of a central green with an expanded walkway, benches, lighting, shade trees, and landscaping to a focal point and gathering place along Main Street. The conceptual site plan for the new building was approved by the Calvert County Planning Commissions at your September meeting, so that is consistent with the above goal and objective. So staff's recommendation is no change.
Commissioners?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toohey, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler. Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next is the plan for the new county administr, or the plan, excuse me, the plan is for the new county administration building to be a green building. Will leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, L E E D, certification require the stormwater management system to meet more than the minimum requirements? Staff's analysis is prior to the county services plaza, the prior county services plaza was constructed before stormwater management regulations were adopted by the state. The LEED program and certification are based upon a point system that encourages the use of best management practices in the field of energy and environmental design. LEED points have been credited to the site design of the new county administration building for capturing ninety-five percent of the rainwater on-site and providing stormwater management treatment for all disturbed areas associated with site development that meets or exceeds the Maryland Department of Environmental Regulations. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation of no change.
Commissioner Toohey.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next is recent high-density residential development west of Prince Frederick Boulevard has resulted in sediment flowing into Mill Creek. There is also little green space available for recreation. A park within walking distance is needed to provide simple recreational opportunities in this area. Staff's analysis points out the broad goal of the comprehensive plan is to provide access to a variety of quality recreational environments and opportunities. And then, in the draft plan, there is each, well, in the comprehensive plan, each town center should serve as the focal point of recreation for residents having the following. The town park or village green, in-town pedestrian and bike system, and activity centers and schools, an outdoor public facility designed primarily for active team sports, and an indoor community center capable of providing a range of activities for all age groups. It's in the draft plan, but it's actually reflecting text that is in the county comprehensive plan. The Parks and Recreation Planning and Acquisition Goals are established in the county's Land Preservation, Parks, and Recreation Plan. The most recent one was adopted in twenty-eighteen. And then, both the county comprehensive plan and Land Preservation, Parks, and Recreation Plan call for the creation of trails and paths within the town center areas to connect the town centers to outlying parks and open spaces. I won't go into the rest, but basically, staff's recommendation is to include a sixth strategy under goal three, objective one, which would be ten dot three dot one dot six, to evaluate existing public resources within the Prince Frederick Town Center for providing additional active and passive recreational opportunities, especially in areas of higher-density residential growth.
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland, a second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to page eleven, Chapter Ten does not follow the Maryland Department of Planning's publication, Managing Maryland's Growth Models and Guidelines.
Jenny, what, what, what?
Page nineteen or twenty?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm like, where, no, we're not going back to eleven.
We are on page twenty.
Thank you very much.
So the, the concern was, Chapter Ten, the government and community facilities does not follow the Maryland Department of Planning publication, Managing Maryland's Growth Models and Guidelines, number twenty-four, adequate public facilities, because it does not include a complete list of new community facilities, nor any of the associated costs. The list and price tag for the facilities that are generated by this process are usually staggering to local officials, but it is important not to ignore the reality of the fiscal demands that will be made by growth. Failure to confront this reality leads to the crisis situations that cause the demand for APF laws. Staff's analysis is the Prince Frederick Master Plan is the long-range plan and policy document designed to help residents create a vision for their community, including land use and growth, that is in line with the goals and objectives of the county comprehensive plan. The master plan is supported by a number of functional plans adopted by the Board of County Commissioners to evaluate the existing facilities and infrastructure, enlisting ongoing and proposed improvement projects and identify future long-term needs to govern growth through the stated goals and objectives. These functional plans serve as community facilities plans and include the county's transportation plan, Land Preservation, Parks, and Recreation Plan, Comprehensive Water and Sewage Plan, Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan, Hazard Mitigation Plan, and the Flood Management Plan. Staff's recommendation is no change.
I make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation of no change.
Second. Mr. Chair, you're muted, you're muted.
My apologies. We had a motion by Commissioner Toohey and a second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Mr. Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
The next summary comment was basically a thank you for including the Harry Elizabeth Brown Community Center details in the draft plan. So I think there's, staff recommended no change, but it's actually just recognizing that comment. So it was a thank you.
Okay.
No actions needed.
No action needed. The next is create family-centered activities. The comprehensive plan sets forth the expectation for recreation in the town centers, and I won't go through because we've already mentioned what they were. But one of the points was to provide a range of activities for all age groups. In the draft, goal three in Chapter Ten follows this directive by stating Prince Frederick will provide access to a variety of quality recreational environments and opportunities in Calvert County by increasing the amount of land dedicated to recreation and natural resources. And then, it goes on to say how this will be accomplished. So staff's recommendation is the need for family-centered activities are being addressed in the draft, and no, no recommendation, no change is needed.
Commissioners?
I make motion that we accept staff's recommendation and no recommendation is needed.
Commissioner Toohey, second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next is efforts need to be made to designate as much land as possible between the current western boundary of Prince Frederick and the Patuxent River for use for recreational open space, farming, forestry, ecotourism, and agritourism. This includes the land currently designated as Phase Two. Phase Two of the Prince Frederick Town Center takes the rural landscape into consideration, and boundaries are extended minimally beyond the traditional boundaries. The extended boundaries do not include the fairgrounds or Howland Point Waterfront Park. Most of the expansion area is designated as, proposed to be designated as traditional suburban, which is low-density, single-family residential development of one to four dwelling units per acre. This low-density harmonizes with the existing zoning of residential and rural residential, as well as Calvert County's natural resources. Farming, forestry, and ecotourism and agritourism is allowed. Staff's recommendation is no change.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation of no change.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, second by Commissioner Freeland, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next is a comment to create more bike trails with picnic amenities on vacant properties. Goal three in Chapter Ten of the Prince Frederick Town Center Plan Draft follows the directive of the county's comprehensive plan, which town centers are to serve as focal points of recreation for the town center residents and surrounding areas. By stating Prince Frederick will provide access to a variety of quality recreational environments and opportunities in the county by increasing the amount of land dedicated to recreation and natural resources. As the county's population grows, the inventory of parks and recreation assets and programs, as well as resources of the Department of Parks and Recreation should increase in a corresponding manner to ensure continued delivery of high-quality programs, facilities, facility maintenance, and infrastructure. Staff's recommendation is no change. I would like to also add that we can certainly provide this comment to the Land Preservation, Parks, and Recreation County staff and consultant team for their consideration. But for the Prince Frederick Plan, the recommendation is no change.
I would move that we accept the staff's recommendation of no change.
Commissioner Toohey and a second by, I believe, Commissioner Freeland, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
The Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Jenny, you're gonna make sure that Shannon gets that, right?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
In fact, all the comments for both the, um, initial comment period and the extended comment period have been provided to all the department heads.
Very, very good.
Moving on to page twenty-two, we are now moving into chapter eleven. We're in the home stretch. Um, chapter eleven, um, residents raised concerns about the, the language in chapter seven, transportation, about connecting Stokely Road through Hunter's Ridge subdivision to meet West Dears Beach Road. Uh, staff, um, provided a markup of the proposed revised text at the planning commission's meeting on July twenty-first, um, that deleted the, the reference in chapter seven. Um, and the July twenty-twenty-one draft reflected that change. However, the text is duplicated in chapter eleven, and so the similar change needs to be made to the text in chapter eleven, and that would delete the text through the Hunter's Ridge subdivision as shown on page twenty-two. Staff's recommendation is to revise the action in chapter eleven.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make motion that we accept staff recommendation, revise the action in chapter eleven.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tui, second by Commissioner, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries and God bless whoever sneezed.
Moving on to general or miscellaneous comments, there was a request, uh, for a link to be provided to the comments that have been submitted on the draft Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan. In addition, there was a request for links to be posted in a prominent place on the master plan website. So, uh, comments are available online, however, they're through, uh, the planning commission's agenda as a link. Um, and then comments submitted during the extended comment period are also available online, but you have to go to the planning commission's agenda and then hit the links from there. So, um, planning and zoning staff is working with the Communications and Media Relations Division staff to create a new webpage, so a subwebpage under the Prince Frederick Master Plan update where the, uh, draft and future drafts of the plan, the staff memorandum to the agencies requesting comments and the co- and the comments that have been provided by agencies and the public would all be available in a central location. This is similar to what was done for the county comprehensive plan. So, um, staff's recommendation is that staff is developing an additional webpage for Prince Frederick that responds to the request to make the comments on the current draft plan in a prominent place on the town center master plan and zoning ordinance update page. And staff will be adding links to future Prince Frederick Town Center master plan drafts and comments on the draft as they become available. So basically asking you to endorse what we are currently have initiated.
So most, motion to endorse what, what, what Jenny just said.
Sounds great, Commissioner Kernan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Freeland, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. There are, at the bottom of page twenty-two, miscellaneous editorial and corrective recommendations. There are typos in the document such as sentences missing periods. There's also, um, an action item that has an additional digit that needs to be removed. So, um, six, five, one, one versus the triple ones. In addition, there's a sentence fragment on page seven dash three to, um, delete the bypass option. And then replace letters under the objectives in chapter eight, economic vitality with numbers to match the styles in the other areas. Plus, um, staff presented to you last month, um, at the September fifteenth meeting, edits, they're actually additions um, to chapter eleven, pages eleven sixteen through eleven eighteen, that, um, there were action items and agency identifications to the responsible party, uh, parties were, was, were omitted in the draft so that, um, markup was provided to you last month. Staff's recommendation is, staff is requesting permission from the planning commission to make the changes mentioned above and to make non-substantive corrections to typos in the draft master plan. And I will note, not only above, but the one I just mentioned about chapter eleven, page sixteen through eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we accept staff's recommendation and grant permission from planning commission to make the changes mentioned.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tui, a second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes the, um, staff, um, the summary and staff's analysis.
Jenny, thank you so much, you're my hero. Jenny, great.
I got a lot of help.
I know you did, but you presented and that was a tough job.
And, and, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I want to commend David Berry for staying on this, um, this Zoom call this long. He has always been the person who has held our feet to the fire and, uh, um, want him to know that we appreciate all that he does and cares for and the compassion he has for Calvert County.
David, that, that goes ditto for me and, and Greg. The last, um, M P C A meeting, I believe he, he went out of pocket to attend that meeting. Uh, so, good for him and David, I know you can hear us, you can't speak, but thank you very much for everything you're doing.
Thank you, sir, yeah.
And this is Jenny, um, so, um, I have a few additional slides, there, that we can cover them very quickly. So if you don't mind, I will share the screen. We've already seen these, um, so I'd like to just give an overview of the adoption process. There are many more steps in addition to coming back to the planning commission. So, uh, we're right here now at the review and consider comments submitted on the July twenty-twenty draft. Staff will be working with you to prepare the revised draft. At some point in time, the planning commission will, um, prepare that and finalize it as the planning commission's recommended plan. That's the recommended plan to go to public hearing. We need, the planning commission needs to provide, um, at least sixty days advance notice, uh, to state and regional agencies to review the draft. The planning commission would then hold a public hearing to receive comments. Agencies in the public can submit written comments on the public hearing draft and then also verbally comment at the public hearing. Then the planning commission would review and consider comments on the recommended plan, make any revisions, prepare and vote on an approved plan to send forward to the Board of County Commissioners. The planning, sorry, the county commissioners' role is to hold a public hearing on the draft plan. Again, it provides an opportunity for agencies in the public to provide written and or oral comments at the public hearing, written comment in advance. Um, both the planning commission and county commissioners can also decide to hold the record open after the public hearings. And then the board has four options, they can, uh, or the board can adopt the plan, modify the plan, remand the plan back to the planning commission, or disapprove the plan. And then the next slide is just a reminder to, um, people on the several ways they can stay up to date about the plan's, um, status, which is to visit the, um, town center update project page to sign up for email notifications through the notify me, um, segment on the, on the county's website and to follow the county on Facebook. This leads to the final, I think we've taken the actions by the planning commission, so let me stop sharing. Um, so that concludes staff's presentation.
Mr. Khan over.
Thank you, that moves us on to item ten, items of interest, we have seventy-two of them to cover. I'm just kidding. Um, moving on then to item eleven, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Commissioner Kernan, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Tui, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Great work tonight, everybody, staff especially, thank you all for hanging in there, God bless, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good night, Jenny. Thank you.
Night.